Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 12th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Legions.
The pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberatory and justiciable.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Yep.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, next I have approval of amendments from the October 22nd meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
First and the second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Downey, who have approval of the bills?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move approval for the bills in the amount of $2,749,018.68, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
Uh, first and second of bills, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, next we have public comments. Is anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to talk about? Now, if you have time, we have, as always, we have a two-minute limit, so come on up. Please sign in and name, address, phone number.
Diane assured me that after my hip surgery, she wouldn't be starting the timing until I actually got up here. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm William Hanson. My address is N 8723, 1025th Street, River Falls. I'd like to talk for a couple of minutes here about our hydroelectric generating benefits. Three local groups which are directly benefit from our continued generation and sale of electricity produced by our Junction Falls Hydro and Dam include our 6,000 electric utility customers through positive utility cash flow, local taxpayers through the payment to the city of the hydropilot fee, and each one of us due to the resulting reduction of fossil fuel burning and as a demonstration of the city's support for a sustainable, sustainable future. You council members can demonstrate your support for sustainability by encouraging the city to promptly fill the proposed sustainable court, uh, court, court, the stable, cardinal thank you position with a strong, aggressive, useful person. In the last six to eight months, the city, perhaps due to the lack of an individual with specific sustainability focus, has left on the table hundreds of thousands of Department of Energy dollars that have been set aside to improve efficiency and upgrade existing hydroelectric generating facilities as part of the federal sustainability effort. I encourage you to support the prompt addition of a highly qualified sustainability person to your city staff. Our continued hydroelectric production directly benefits local electric utility ratepayers, local taxpayers, and it is a continuing demonstration of support for our environmental sustainability efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Anybody else? So, yep.
I just wanted to make sure that I say this in many places as possible, so people are aware. I am not running for reelection, uh, in April, so if there are interested parties who would like to run for District Three, I would encourage them to do so. And I want to thank the constituents of District Three for placing your trust in me in the last four years. Um, and I look forward to doing more in the community in different ways. So, thank you very much.
You? Anybody else?
If I could, on November 2nd, the local Rotary Club did its semi-annual cleanup of Veterans Park. We raked up a bunch of leaves and cut back some shrubs and so forth. And I'd like to recognize Erica Elifson, the Public Works Manager, who gave up a Saturday morning to come with a truck and a bunch of, a whole bunch of tools and things to carry the leaves down to the compost site. So, thank you, Erica. I think you're up next anyway, but thank you for your help and we appreciate it. And, uh, hopefully the park, uh, is tucked, tucked, uh, tucked into bed for the winter. So, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to just add, if I could too, um, a side note, and maybe you were gonna say something about it later too, but what a fantastic job our poll workers did and Amy did last week on, um, running, um, helping run the election, both here locally and the county-wise and statewide and the, um, federal-wise. So, um, excellent job by our poll workers here.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, yep. So, Erica's up. I don't know, I, I always hate this presentation every year. I never know if I should boo or clap or, but she's gonna give us the annual snow and ice control presentation.
I definitely boo, but that's just me. I like it warm. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Erica Elifson and I'm the Public Works Manager. Thank you for allowing me some time tonight to speak with you on snow and ice control for the upcoming snow season. I wanted to start off introducing the main snow plowing crew who keep our streets clear of snow and ice. This is a team that answers the call in the middle of the night to clear our streets, so snow emergency services, so emergency services like police, fire, and ambulances reach their destinations. Bus drivers can pick up our kids for school, college students can make it to class, businesses can open their doors, and we can make our way into work and go about our regular day. Words really cannot express how much this team cares, or should I say stresses, about snow removal timing and the safety of our streets. The snow plowing team consists of a total of 14 staff. Of those 14 staff, there are 10 maintenance workers, Eric, Joey, Todd, John, Lucas, Troy, Nate, and Joey, in addition to the maintenance leads, Charles and Eric. And there are also two mechanics, also one of them named Joe. And Jeff, who are responsible to plow the lower priority routes in case they need to be pulled to work on a broken-down piece of equipment. And we also have one water, wastewater operator, David, who unfortunately is not in this picture. We may also call on Ken and Tommy in Facilities or Tim, Joe, and Pete in the Water Department to maintain high priority routes during extended storms. It really does take all of us working together to clear not only the streets in the city, but also the paved trails and the public parking lots. So, many may not know that each street is prioritized for snow plowing. The high priority plow routes are streets and trails by schools and emergency services. So, think Main Street, Second Street, Division Street, Cemetery Road, Paulson Road, in addition to Winter Street, Maple Street, East Cascade, Powell, and Radio. So, we really do have quite a few main routes. The median priority plow routes are the next largest streets that service many residents. So, think the through streets to get you to the development you live in, like Roosevelt Street, Foster Street, Meadows Drive, Newcastle Drive, East Johnson Street, and the Third Street, just to name a few. Next comes the low priority routes, which is a neighborhood street and serves less residents, like Fair Trail Drive, Windflower Street, River Ridge Road, Church Street, South Forest Street, and West Cedar Street. Lastly, the lowest priority routes are typically streets that end in cul-de-sacs, dead ends, or short streets that serve the least amount of residents. This year, we have the same 99.74 lane miles to maintain as we did last year, but we added 2.39 miles of paved trail, which includes the Man Valley Trails. So, the number, now, the number-one way to clear snow is mechanically, by plowing it with equipment. The city has many different pieces of equipment to clear snow. To start, the city has five single axle plow trucks. So, we had some fun this year and named our five plow trucks. Our newest plow truck's name is Snow Force One, which is operated by Todd. He plows the west side of town. Joey operates Scoop Dog on the east side, in the southeast side. Lucas operates Orange Peeler on the south side of town. And Troy operates Blizzard Wizard from Second Street East to Hanson Drive. And Joel or Nate operate Mr. Plow on the north side. In addition to our five plow trucks, we have one mortar grader with the left wing, a wheel loader with the blower attachment, and a Kenworth quad axle truck, all used to clear Main Street and arterial feeder streets. Three four-by-four trucks with a V plow blade for trails and alleys, and one wheel loader with a V plow blade and side wing, in addition to a John Deere tractor with a V blade, both of those clearing cul-de-sacs, dead ends, and parking lots. And we have one sweeper that's used on sidewalks on Main Street and V bridges. We also contract with Linehan Home and Lawn Services to remove snow along the trails in Whitetail and Sterling Pond's Corporate Park, Sterling Pond's residential trails, the Center Median on Main Street, and also a few other small locations throughout town. We also contract for snow hauling services for total excavating, which will have trucks available to haul snow off Main Street for each snow event. Our salt shed can hold 700 tons of salts. Our salt shed currently is full for the season as pictured. We purchase salt off the state contract, which allows us to get the best pricing. We pre-order how much salt we plan to use for the upcoming year, which, each spring. This year, we ordered a guaranteed seasonal fill of 600 tons. Plus, we have the ability to order an additional 20% or 120 ton as contingency or vendor reserve. We make our salt brine in-house, which is a combination of rock salt and water, and we store it in a tank outside our building until it is dispensed into the plow trucks. Beet heat is safer for the environment because it's 99% biodegradable. It is derived from refined sugared sugar beet molasses. When using beet heat with salt brine, the infectiveness of the salt increases at lower temperatures, reducing the amount of salt needed for deicing. This is because beet heat's sugar content lowers the effective working temperature of salt and brine alone. When we put salt on the streets, it's always pre-wet with salt brine and beet heat because the liquid activates the salt and it also reduces scatter loss. So, if there's one slide I hope everybody remembers, I'm really hoping it's this slide. So, we could get multiple six-inch snow events in a snow season, and each event is planned unique to the current conditions. The time of day of the snow starts and ends, the duration of the snow falling, the total amount of snow accumulated, and temperature all play a role in when staff get called in and what equipment is used. During the heavier, longer, and higher amounts of accumulation, we may run a dual plow route, meaning there are two trucks on the high priority routes, one following the other to clear the snow to the curb faster. Though each snow event is different, you can follow a general rule of thumb on what to expect. So, we re, we pre-treat high priority streets to allow for less snow compaction, easier snow removal and deicing. During a longer snow event, staff will be maintaining the high priority streets, which means multiple passes by homes and businesses along the high priority route. So, this comes in handy if you're one of those that likes to go out to the end of your driveway and plow it right away. You might see a plow again, so just please nicely wave to us. Once the snow event ends, it takes about eight to 10 hours to clear the streets, which includes at least two passes made on each side of the street to move the snow to the curb. The following night after the snow has ended, staff come in to plow uneven parking and plow, blow, and haul snow off Main Street to the snow dump adjacent to the wastewater tube implant. We truly do our best work at night because there is less traffic and obstacles to plow around. The days following the snow event, staff are hauling snow from lower priority areas like dead-end streets, cul-de-sacs, and double-checking that all the city-owned trails and sidewalks have been plowed and are not icy. Do not be alarmed, even if we've spent multiple days clearing snow, bare pavement may not be visible. So, I appreciate you allowing me today to come and speak with you about our snow and ice control and what to expect this upcoming snow season, and I stand for any questions.
I'd just like to thank you and, uh, welcome Snow Force One into our fleet. And, uh, I appreciate the responsiveness of the city and finding ways of prioritizing things that make our lives, uh, better in a difficult time of the year. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything? No? Thanks, Erica.
Thank you.
Doing a great job. Okay, next we will close the council hearing up and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2024-06, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of River Falls, Wisconsin for the year 2025, and this is the second reading. And first, we will, um, Josh Solinger, our Finance Director, will give a little presentation, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Okay, so, thank you, Mayor and Council Members. Um, this is the second reading slash adoption for the budget, which also includes the tax levy. Um, so, just to quickly, there's just a few slides here, because this is, we've talked quite a bit about it at this point. So, um, starting at the first budget workshop on October 8th, we had an opportunity to get together as a group and talk through the budget in detail. Um, at that point, we would have been talking about both years of the budget you are approving, um, in concept, a biennial budget, and then what this action does is actually approve the 2025 budget, appropriates funds for it, and adopts the levy. So, we talked about it again on October 22nd. And what changed between the first and the second workshops is that there was a request from Council to, um, appropriate some additional funding for Emerald Ash Bore mitigation. So, we, we did that. And we increased funding for EAB, um, by $50,000 or from $250,000 each year to $300,000 each year. And you'll see that again in one year's time when we're asking you to approve the 2026 budget. So, for 2025, the budget totals $62,199,106. You can see by fund type where the largest differences are. It's primarily capital projects, our enterprise funds, and special revenue funds. For the capital projects, that primarily just comes down to a fire station project. Um, for your enterprise funds, in that case, we are contemplating having new rates go into effect for our utilities this next year. And so, um, we budgeted for contributions to working capital in that case just to try to build that rate of return back up to the PSC's benchmark and to get back in line with working capital and debt coverage policies of the city council. And then for special revenue funds, that includes things like the Environmental Fee Fund, making transfers to the General Fund for Emerald Ash Bore and the Housing Reserve Fund. Um, we're anticipating providing some additional loans on an as-needed basis for affordable housing. We haven't identified any specific uses at this time, um, but we did want to go ahead and, and make the budget available in the event that those requests do come through. And so, that's kind of a really high-level overview of what the changes, um, by fund type involve. So, then today's action, this being the second reading and adoption, um, you would be approving the 2025 portion of the biennial budget, which again totals $62,199,000. You're approving it by functional area and fund. So, within the General Fund, we actually kind of categorize that into functional areas like public safety, conservation, and recreation. And so, you're approving within the General Fund by functional area. Otherwise, it's by fund. And then we just, when it comes to actually implementing the budget, we just look to the bottom line of those functional areas and funds. You're also providing authority to staff to implement that plan. Of course, we will come back to you for authorization for certain purchases and things, um, based on the city's procurement policy. And then you're appropriating, obviously, for fiscal year 2025. And then the second action is you're approving the tax levy for 2024, collectible 2025. As I've mentioned in the past, in Wisconsin, we collect in arrears, so it's actually going to be based on one, one of 24 assessments, and then we collect that money in 2025. Um, so, that totals $8,271,099, which is an increase of about 6% from 2024 collected. But when you factor in growth, uh, that brings the net increase to the levy down to 3.81%, which as we've talked about, is below the 4% um, limit that was set by Council during the fiscal plan process. So, we were able to put together a budget that, um, slightly exceeds the, the council target there. And then last year, obviously authorizing the levy on taxable properties. So, really high level, just zoom back out for this second reading, but that's, that's the presentation for today, and I'd be glad to take any questions.
That's, that's, we're in public hearing, so I'll, I'll, I'll probably come up first if they have any questions or comments. If anybody in the audience has any comments, come on up. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing. And first thing we'll do is take a motion on this.
I move that we approve an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of River Falls for the year 2025.
Second.
First and second. Okay, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment on this. And, um, it's a, it's a budget-based plan that I believe the council would want to support as it helps plan for the future. I don't believe it would alter what we're moving forward today, but it would give direction, I think, that we agree on. So, I want to ask our clerk just to put what I'm about to say into the minutes, word for word. It's a detailed plan, so it needs to be communicated effectively. Thank you. So, I believe, um, whole, wholeheartedly that we should be doing our state-of-the-city here in city council chambers instead of Tattersall or another location and keeping it very simple. Keeping it at City Hall would keep the location familiar, which is part of transparency while saving significant amounts of money. The money saved instead could be used to hire an expert consultant who would use an open and transparent process to do the downtown plan when the money's become available from this strategy. They would host events and get the public's feedback on how they would like to see the downtown in the future, what they would like to see happen, and what it would mean to them. Why a consultant? They would be an expert on transparency, which includes the public in an open and transparent process to discover what they would like to see happen in the downtown in the future. As you know, Mr. Mayor, our staff have limited capacity with the fire station, library, and corridor project are taking a lot of staff time. This would allow us to budget and have a consultant who is an expert on transparency and public engagement, who has actual time to do this in a responsible manner. Budgeting this way, we would be able to do this fiscally responsible while serving the public with an open and transparent process for the downtown plan. What could this look like? I believe this approach would take one to two years potentially and have proper funding doing it this way. If we wanted to match it with grant, that would emphasize community collaboration and downtown planning, we could. Getting a grant to kickstart Riverwalk, for example, um, would help. And also, a grant to help the Falls Theater expand with a potential partner could also be part of the planning process. Improving our downtown with a budget-based strategy allows us to help it sooner, and having a strategy to do it is important. If we approached this correctly, we potentially could help the community arts base, the college artists in the Falls Theater, and all the downtown businesses, and have a community that draws more people to do business and recreation here, while potentially creating an attractive film and arts festival for our entire community. This would be, also protect the Falls Theater for future generations to come in a time where theaters across the country are struggling. This is a legacy I believe we should all want to leave our community. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, um, I don't know if we need a motion to do this, but I just think it's a really nice planning piece that we should look at doing, so.
Speaking of parole hearing, that is not on the agenda, so we cannot take action on that.
Isn't, uh, the budget for our, um, meetings part of that?
That, I, are you asking to add that to the budget?
Yeah. No, no, no. I'm just saying, like, I believe we can do this with the budget we have.
Do you, do you want to make an amendment, or are you just making suggestions for stuff we can do?
I don't necessarily know if I need an amendment. I'm just saying this is something I think we can actually do with the budget we have in place, is what I'm saying. Because we save, the, the idea is we save the money, so we can budget it, is what I'm saying.
So, this is something you want us to look into?
Yes.
So, this isn't really part of the budget?
It, it, it is because...
It's something we can do outside the meeting?
It, it is because if we were to, to match monies with grants, um, then we would move forward with it. But I don't know if we have to, because like, grants are based on contingency funding, and I don't know if we need to contingently fund it. So, we could just move ahead and just think about what I said.
Yeah.
Which I'm fine with.
Right.
Um, I don't think, if I'm ready to make a motion on like, asking for more money, because I don't think we need to do, for, for what I'm asking, it saves money, so I don't think we need to make a motion.
Okay, so, it's just something for staff and us to look into as we move forward?
Yep. Yep, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything? Any questions for Josh, or?
I just have one other comment on a separate topic.
Yep.
Um, one of the highlights, I think, for this past year, um, that doesn't get enough praise is our biosolids facility. And I know we had talked about it when we were reviewing it multiple times, and I know it was like, I remember at one point we were talking like, saved 100,000, then I went and talked with the staff more and like, found out it's actually considerably more after reviewing it. I think it's up to 300,000 a year. Um, and that's a big deal. Um, I think that we're moving forward as a city, targeting these expenses in a, in a responsible manner. And, you know, I couldn't be more proud of our city. We are diversifying and, um, having independence where other cities are failing at doing it. So, we are a leader in that sense, and I appreciate the work that's gone into this. So, from my understanding, though, that 300,000 is from, uh, eliminating our annual cost for Western Wisconsin biosolids, uh, some increased operating and maintenance costs for our own facility, debt service on 2023 borrowing for the project, and transportation savings. So, there's a lot to consider when improving our city, and I think we're doing a good job with that.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so we have first and a second on the ordinance appropriating necessary funds for the operation of the government, uh, for the year 2025. Oh, I need a roll call.
Odine.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Thanks, Amy. Okay. So, we move on to request for a combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license for Streeters LLC, uh, doing business at Streeters. So, there again, we'll close the council hearing and reopen a public hearing on this. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a, a motion that we approve the request for a combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license for Streeters LLC, DBA Streeters.
Second.
First and the second, questions or comments?
I'll just make a comment that I normally ask my three questions of the applicant, but because he's a current applicant in the city, he's already asked those, I do not see the need to.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this?
I would like to say that's my favorite part normally, but... I can do it if you want.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, first one is a resolution approving River Falls Shared Taxi Ride Operating Contract with Running Inc. to provide shared ride taxi service for the city of River Falls for the years 2025 through '26, and approving the 2025 public transit leasing agreement. The next one is a resolution approving the 2025 fee schedule. Uh, next one is a resolution referring an annexation petition for property at 212 Paulson Road uh, to the Plan Commission. And the last one is a resolution authorizing the write-off of uncollectible accounts. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda items by three.
Second.
Uh, first and second, questions or comments on consent? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to the administrator's report. Anybody has anything for Scott, or Scott, if you have anything for us?
I've got a couple of things, um, Mayor and Council. So, this week, crews paved the streets of the intersection of South Lawson Lane and Cascade Avenue. Um, they're doing the final layer of asphalt, and some lines are painted. There'll be some additional lines that need to be painted. We expect the project will be open to the public sometime during the week of November 18th. Uh, project updates on De Sanctus School, uh, De Sanctus Park. The schoolhouse, uh, deck has been removed and replaced with a new concrete patio. The patio has a new concrete ramp that supports ADA access to the building. Um, we also recently finished, uh, re-roofing Glen Park Pool and Bath House and the Boiler Room, uh, including fascia. Uh, we did use, this was money from Hailstorm, um, from insurance from two years ago. Um, and people will notice that these are, well, they may not notice, actually. Uh, these are metallic shingles. Um, they're, uh, to improve the durability and also trying to maintain the historic look of those structures, so that'd be something for people to check out, um, when they're in the park. Um, I don't, I don't think we can overdo our, our thanks, so the mayor might have some thanks, um, that repeat this. But, um, I want to thank staff, um, in particular the finance staff, but also the rest of the department staff that are involved in the budget preparation. Um, understanding that people see a short, um, discussion and a, and a unanimous vote on the budget, and they think, well, where's all the discussion, debate, et cetera. Um, but I appreciate that this is a long process over, you know, many of the projects and things that are funded within the budget are a decade or more in the making, and the council has provided feedback at, at a number of public, um, forums. We have, as you know, we use citizen surveys and strategic initiative, um, sessions from the council. And so, really appreciate all the work from the community, of the staff, um, and the council to be able to put together a budget that we can, um, uh, accomplish some of the goals of the, the, uh, the community. So, I appreciate all of your, your attention to that and questions and interest in the budget and, uh, for us to move on with, uh, the most important part of the budget, which is implementation. So, we'll get, get to work. Um, I also want to thank, uh, uh, City Clerk Amy White and, uh, all of the people that were involved in elections. Uh, we really have a number of our, uh, regular full-time staff are involved in elections as well as a number of, uh, really critical, um, paid volunteers or, or volunteers for the day. Um, some of, some of those volunteer poll workers, or we consider volunteer poll workers, are working, uh, many weeks before the elections to help us with the absentees. And so, I think we should all be proud of, um, how the elections went. Uh, we handled a lot of, uh, same-day registration, and we also handled quite a bit of, uh, same-day, same-day elections this year, which is, um, didn't stay on trend from the last election. So, we, we handled a lot of people on the day of elections, which we were happy to do. Um, and we also had a lot of in-person absentee voting, um, this year. So, those numbers have been provided to the council, um, and are available, um, to the public, um, for our results. So, and, uh, I, I did want to put in a, a, a plug. I've been able to attend, I think they said that the Veterans Day Ceremony at the Middle School has been going on since 2009. nine. So, that would have been my first November here as city minister, and I think I made almost all of them and appreciated the program opportunity to share in the community with the Veterans Day. And as you know, city has a number of veterans that are working for us throughout our, our work, City Hall, public safety, public works, and, and all of the various operations. So, we appreciate their service to the country, and then also, we're happy to have a lot of veterans working for us at the city. So, that's, with that, I take any questions you might have.
Anybody got anything for Scott? No? Okay, I just got a couple of things. Obviously, me and Scott to get together on what we're going to talk about, because he has pretty much covered everything I was going to say. But, it's all good stuff, so I'm going to repeat it all again. So, I just, starting with the election, I just want to give kudos to city clerk Amy White, deputy clerk, city clerk Jackie Hansen, and all the other staff and people that worked that they did to make the general election run so smoothly. We have four different polling locations here in River Falls. We had a total of over nine thousand, one hundred and seventy people vote in River Falls this year, including four thousand, seven hundred and eighty voters, voters at the polls on Election Day. You guys did a marvelous job. It ran as smooth as possibly expected. It was great, greatly appreciated. One thing we didn't talk about was, I want to give some thanks to the Girl Scouts from Troop five-eight-one-three-eight for the work they did last week, laying mulch between the large and small dog park fence lines as part of the Take Action Community Service Project. So, if you happen to bring your dog to the dog park before the snow arrives, be sure to take note of the hard work that the Girl Scouts did.
They sell good cookie, too.
Yeah, they sell good cookies, too. The last thing I want to do was, just, I want to take a moment to thank all of our veterans all around the country and all who work, you know, we have, I believe we have about ten percent of our employees, like Scott said, who are veterans. So, I want to thank you all for all that you have sacrificed in your personal lives to keep us safe and secure in ours. It is greatly appreciated by all of us. I know my wife, Joanie, and I owe all our veterans in the city a debt of gratitude for all you have done and all that you continue to do for us. So, thank you all very much, and God bless you guys. And that's, that was it. So, next, we're going to move on to closed session. Per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five I E, or one E, for the following purposes: deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. To wit, one thirty-two Vine Street. Now, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to move into closed session.
Second. Okay, Amy?
Bjork?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Bierstedt?